I'm Melissa Geiman, I'm the Director of Business Services and Transportation.
I'm Nicole Diford, I'm the Principal at Cape Breton Elementary.
And I'm Carrie Neary, I'm the Curriculum Director, and I have three boys in the district, one at the middle school and two in fifth grade.
And I'm Mike Greeney, I'm the Superintendent, I have 1,600 kids in the district.
Jerry Rudolph Technology?
Yeah. Well, thanks again for everybody coming out, definitely want to ask that everybody be patient, respectful of other people's comments and opinions, we're here to discuss the best way to return to school safely and get our kids back, so, are we up and running, Jerry?
We are live.
We're live, alright, so we'll do, uh, Audience, Visitors, just want to remind everybody, try to keep it five minutes.
For those of you who don't know me, which many of you do not, and have never heard my speech, my name is Katie McElmore, I have one student here for just over one, couple months now, kindergarten, I'm a new parent to the district, I just moved last year to get my son out of Harlem into North Room for kindergarten, one mistake, I think I made that, I want this community to know that parents like me are not just mad or as joke as a venomous towards the school board, we are mourning, we are mourning the loss of a school year filled with memories our children will never get back, it's hard to understand and forgive that you have no control over, we are grieving this loss and fighting for what we believe is right for our children, many will say, oh, she doesn't know what she's talking about, I bet she'll say something different if she was considering high risk or somebody in her family got sick, my family already had this recovered from the virus with no complications, medical treatment, or hospitalization, and I do have underlying conditions, a condition that required me to have open heart surgery at an extremely young age, so when I tell you how I feel and what I believe, it's with all respect to others that also have high risks, the Boone County Health Department recommends, remember that word, because it's going to be forgotten tonight, recommends that schools reopen with standards that are on the Department of Public Health for Illinois website, if the information published on here doesn't follow what is on the Illinois Coronavirus Response website, you're going to hear about the difference infection, about the infection rate being about the recommended value, we're at 10.6, this is the value of positive cases over tested individuals, we are at 3.06 percent for their Illinois Coronavirus Response website, which is the confirmed cases over total population, the 10 percent is only the individuals that are being tested, it does not take into account those that are not feeling ill, also, think of it this, 90 percent of the people tested who not have COVID-19, look where we live, those 90 percent that got tested might be like me, suffering from extreme seasonal allergies, trust me, last week I went up, I showed up, so I was just scared too long, okay, I was feeling extremely sick, they might have a source that works on the county with a high exposure of cases, like our response, the gas, they might have gotten tested just to be safe and sorry, they did the right thing, now, some are thinking 90 percent, she's really playing with the numbers, doesn't she, but think back to where I said I have a current condition, it's hereditary, my father had it, my oldest sister had it, and I had it, we all needed open heart surgery, when I was pregnant, I would see a specialist, and I was told it's 40 percent chance of passing to my son, I had to be thinking of the 60 percent, just like I think of the 90 percent that don't have it every single day, I don't know how I would have made it full term if I didn't think of that 60 percent, this is equal to what I'm asking you to think of, think of the 90 percent, think of the 90 percent, 97 percent of the total population of Boone County that is not sick, you cannot look in fear of 10 percent and 3 percent sick, also, think of Chicago has 164,000 cases today, they have more cases than the entire population of Boone County twice over, yet they're not on the warning list, McHenry County has over 5,000 cases, yet school went back today, you might have seen today in the news too, that 40 million reported cases worldwide, but the population is 7.8 billion, that's 7,660 million not sick, 17.9 million people die of heart disease a year, number one killer in the world, something I'm very concerned about, that still beats the 1.12 million that COVID-19 does, it's purely a numbers game at this point, whose numbers are you going to use to determine if our kids can go back to school, whose percent are you going to live on, 3 percent, 10 percent sick, or 97, 90 percent healthy, thank you.
Thank you, I did get a email from a teacher in the school district, I'm just going to read the email, we'd like the Board to consider letting all staff, not just staff with children, the opinion, the option to teach their students, remote students from home, this would be appreciated with the winter weather coming, and it'd be nice to have the choice whether to teach from home or from the classroom, well, that's something we can discuss. So, no other Audience, the Visitors, let's move on to a proposed timeline for Plan for the Committee. And Phase Two, I guess, I guess we're here to, how do I go over Phase Two? Mike, what's Phase Two?
So Phase Two, I believe we were supposed to come back to 19th, but if we continue to use the metrics that's coming back from the County Health Department, we would now need to push it back yet another two weeks from today, so, our last metrics came back, let me pull this up, I've got them here, they just were released today, I gotta do it with one hand. When technology fails, uses the paper copy. So, our positivity rate for the county was 14.2, and according to Boone County Health metrics, they would like us to be 8 percent or under, so we're at 14.2 percent, the incident rate, they want for us to be able to return between 14, and our in-person county rate was 49, and our youth rate, which would be the same rates, was at 37, so right now our county's a little high with our cases that are coming back, but those would be metrics, I guess, we could discuss, this was what was recommended through the Boone County Health Department, but if the Committee wanted to discuss those, look at those, and possibly go with something else, that might be an item of discussion for the Committee to consider. So, back to the question was, Phase, well, this was supposed to be for our kindergarten, and our pre-K, and our Special Ed kids, five through eight, coming back, this is obviously going to push us back a little bit further for them, and if we continue to use these metrics, and then Phase Two would be on the backside of that, two weeks after that, so I think, what are we looking at, November 2nd now, is that our date, and then another two weeks after that, that would be November 16th, so those are all up for open conversation too.
Did anybody have any questions or comments about Phase Two, or anything they'd like to see different?
Would you like Carrie to just kind of walk us through Phase Two?
Sure.
Sure. She loves doing this, she's done it so many times.
So, Kelly has it up here on the screen, so, for Phase Two, we would be proposing to bring, to add, for our special education students, add nine through 12, and then for our elementary buildings, our K4 buildings, we'd be adding first and second grade, Tuesday through Friday for their half days, and then third and fourth IEP students for support by appointment on Mondays, because students are full remote in those buildings on Mondays, so that would be what we would propose adding in Phase Two.
Does anybody have any concerns with that, or any comments? Nope.
No, not specifically. Not specifically, I guess I, at some point in the week, would go back to talk about a proposed timeline to look at the dates, and maybe, I don't know if we have a calendar we can put up or something like that, to look at what the phases plan on being now, and what they would be pushed off to based on what we're looking at now, that would give us a timeline to talk about this Committee, and this Committee's plan, its goals, I think we're, as you and I discussed, all right, before the meeting, with the 11th hour notification of the Committee members getting questions out, it was my hope that this Committee would be an opportunity for teachers and parents and whomever to get their concerns out, be brought to the table, I expected, I kind of hoped with a little bit more time, we could get a list of things to present, concerns from the teachers, concerns from the parents, but I think at this point in time for tonight, and I don't think we gave people enough time to get there, so I think this Committee, as far as its functions, I'm sorry, we're struggling tonight, I think, I don't know if what, there was only one, that one issue that was brought?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So I would like to go back to the timeline for the Committee at some point.
So I can really ad hoc the dates together, so Phase One would now become November 2nd, Phase Two would become November 16th, Phase Three would become November 30th, and I think we'd still hold Phase Four at the semester at January 19th, so, we just would kind of push your phases back, in our PowerPoint, kind of shift the numbers down, the dates almost stayed the same because of the delay we've had here, the two-week delay, so Phase One, like I said, now becomes November 2nd, Phase Two becomes the 16th, Phase Three becomes November 30th, but like I said, any one of those dates could be adjusted or modified. I'll also say that we chose the two-week windows in between, so that, in our discussion with the Health Department, is if you were to have kids come back and you were to have some outbreak, really, with the combination of kids coming back together, you typically see that, maybe not in Week One, but you can see it in Week Two, so if you had a large outbreak, you would be able to, be able to react or pivot if you needed to, so that's why there were two weeks that apart.
I'm a little curious if there's any concern at all about having or holding classes in person between Thanksgiving and the first of the year, arguably, when Thanksgiving occurs, people are going together, I would imagine, in the community, I plan on seeing my family for Thanksgiving, and I additionally plan on seeing them for Christmas, I'm just curious if there was any discussion about that with the timeline, whether or not we were concerned about people gathering with their families and then coming back, and, you know, really, maybe spreading it that way.
So, with us, because of the way we originally had the timeline set up, that was not one of our primary concerns that we worked into our timelines that we put together, I did get a chance to sit in last week on the Winnebago County Health Call, as they talked with school superintendents in Winnebago, and that was a huge concern that Dr. Martel talked about from there, Winnebago County Health Department, was with all the families traveling during Thanksgiving and bringing, you know, coming back to return, do you open yourself up, and she did suggest a consideration into an adaptive pause, I think, I'm almost positive, almost all the school districts, I just didn't hear whether or not South Bend decided to file through, most of the schools elected to consider to stay in school and manage any outbreaks that they go with the current guidelines that they have, so, it was definitely something considered, it's definitely something talked about, the other thing that came up in there too was, if you did that two-week, kind of quarantine period after Thanksgiving, really, you're walking back with like a week left into Christmas, and you're looking for those smooth transitions and timelines to get kids back, and then all of a sudden you take off for two weeks of Christmas, and now you've got people traveling yet again, so I don't know that they ever came up with a clean, clear deadline or date to make that happen, even though they totally understand the concern there.
So Mike, I guess we're using the Boone County's metrics, how are we using the metrics, and is that something that we, as a district, would be willing to deviate from, or are we going to stick specifically by what their Health Department's recommendations are?
So currently, right now, we did, we put in there our last proposal when we passed Phase One, to use the county's health metrics, and like I said when I was explaining it there, the Boone County Health Department worked with some other county health departments around the area, and they came up with basically five measures, one was the positivity rate for the county, and like I said, ours is a little higher right now, 14.2, they would like that 8 percent or under to be able to consider what their recommendation's saying, and again, it's a recommendation, their recommendation would be, if you're higher than that, you would not be bringing back the next phase of students, we wouldn't walk backwards, so students that were in school, you'd keep, but if you, and this was with their recommendation, if you were getting ready to bring the next phase back, and your positivity rate was higher than 8 percent, their recommendation would be to hold off until that came down, the other thing that they looked at was the test turnaround, really, they want tests turned around pretty quickly, I believe they can live with three to seven days, and right now our county is, I believe our tests are being turned around in two days, the third metric that they're looking at is the incident rate, and the incident rate for the county, they want that between 7 and 14 per day, as a rolling average, and our rolling average right now is a little high, we are around 49, and that's countywide incident rate, and Julie, jump in if I explain this wrong, and the last thing is youth, excuse, second to last thing is youth incident rate, that is very similar, they want the numbers, the youth incident rate daily to be somewhere between 7 and 14, obviously, under that would be even more ideal, but if you got to 7 and 14, they could live with that for this hybrid model of students coming back in person, and as well as learning online, so 7 to 14, and right now our youth incident rate is also kind of high, that's at 37, the last thing that they wanted to have in place was, is they wanted to see 10 consecutive days with that rolling average under those metrics, and that was kind of the guidelines that they shared with us and Belvedere, I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of learning this as we go, and without anything to really compare it or back it off to, it's hard to say whether these are the right metrics, or are these too aggressive, or are they too, are they too stringent for us to get back, but that might be something, if there's something else that the Committee wants to look at and consider, or if there's a risk level that we're more acceptable with as a piece for discussion, but that is the recommendation that several Health Departments got together and looked at and tried to use this, they called it a school-based metric for schools to use for returning in person, and they were trying to give schools something solid to work off of and look at objectively, to consider to bring kids back.
Would the Health Department be able to split up where we can have our Poplar Grove metrics separated from Belvedere North, I think we have very different populations.
I have not asked that them specifically, Julie, do you know that offhand, do they do, do they do it by, almost like I'm going to call it zip code, but?
They do have a breakdown by zip code, but not for the school metrics, that's by county, but they do have some of the other metrics that they send out in that same email, broken down by zip code, I can look it up and tell you what exactly that is, I believe it's positivity rate and number of cases, so it's not quite as applicable to what we're, you know, basing our decision on, but some of the data is there.
But I could ask Amanda if there's possibly to get that more located to the school metrics towards our region.
Is there any school districts that are using a GIPR metric other than your Health Departments that, you know?
So yeah, so, Winnebago's using something closer to what IDPH and ISBE put out, a lot of the similar factors, but I think the only one that's different in there is, I don't think that they have a youth incident rate, but they're using the incident rate, the positivity rate, the incident rate, and then they have hospital beds, they have a few other factors that are kind of more to the health-related field, a lot of the similar ones, but I think that the difference between the two is the youth incident rate.
Good question.
Yeah, it's just...
Moving fast.
Sorry, it's positive cases by zip code, so, but we could definitely reach out and see if that's a possibility, for sure.
All right, I'll think. Brian, there were, I missed the introduction, so I am actually, especially with masks here, I don't know all the faces that are here, did anybody else want to see any other metrics that were used, because I know that was in part Tom's wish for, one of the purposes of this Committee was to look at different metrics, if that isn't, that's off the table, I guess I would like people to discuss that, what other metrics are people hoping to see, are we just going with the Boone County Health Department, what are the options, I guess should be something that would be discussed tonight?
So the one that Tom had moved forward, that was kind of easy to work with too, was a CDC-recommended one, but again, a lot of the similar, very similar variables, but just set up in a different type of chart that maybe made it a little more flow, easier flow to read, so. Now supposedly the CDC, and then what is put out by IDPH are supposed to mirror one another.
Have we looked at any other metrics, or is this pretty much more focused on the Health Department?
Yeah, this is, this is what I've seen, that's been brought forward to us at this point, based off, really, it starts off at CDC, works down to your State Health Department, and then to your County Health Departments. Now, the one that Boone County put together, they worked with nine other counties, and I don't know which ones they are, I think they're all east, I know that they are not on this, that they're not the same, it's slightly different than Rockford, so, or, I shouldn't say Rockford, Winnebago, so Winnebago and Boone are, Winnebago, I believe, is working off the IDPH statistics, and I believe Boone County kind of operated up off this new chart with the youth incident rate.
Anybody have any other comments or questions about the metrics you're using, or?
Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, would blood metric carry more weight than another metric, for example, by the zip code, or the, you know, the families in our district, would that get more weight than some of the other metrics?
You want that one, Julie?
Sure, I think it's hard to say, because each piece can contribute something to, you know, kind of assess the situation, so like the positivity rate tells us, you know, how prevalent it is in our community, and how, you know, high-risk it is, and then the incident rate for youth is important too, so I don't know that any really carries, you know, more weight, it is kind of difficult in our area to break it down by zip code a little bit, just because we rely on surrounding areas for shopping and, you know, essential things, so, it's challenging, that's why we kind of have to take into consideration what the whole county looks like.
Then the other thing that I'd say with that is, is when you talk to the County Health Department, they're staring at the county as a whole, and I don't know that they break it out by region for us, just because they're overseeing the whole thing, and a lot of what we do, any questions we have, any type of advice that we need, we come back to them based on their county health recommendation, so that, it's a good question, but it's hard to, I think it'd be hard for them to govern where they, where they make the changes, they stare at it as an entire county.
Mike, I'm looking at a calendar, if November 1st for Phase One, November 2nd is your tentative goal now, that would be the soonest we would come back, would be November 2nd?
If we continued to use these metrics, and we wanted the 10 consecutive days of staying under that, we would need, basically, we would need next Monday's report to come out far lower than where we're at right now, which makes me nervous to get it that low, especially with what's going on regionally, because that would be just Week One, and then you'd need that second week if we followed these metrics, so that would be the soonest you could get, bring kids back under that recommendation or under that model.
November 2nd?
Correct.
And you've already let parents know that we're looking at November 2nd?
Not yet, on November 2nd, we let them know that we're going to be at least pushing it back a week, and I did not send that notification out yet today pending the Committee tonight.
I was just thinking about, on that day would be potentially the day you would let them know, which would be a week ahead, and you're, and we're comfortable with a week leeway notice of letting people know, okay, yes, in a week, be ready to come back, at least for Phase One.
So now Woodstock, today was scheduled to go back to school in McHenry, and when they didn't hit their metrics Friday, and I guess theirs come out Friday, they let their parents know Friday by an email out to everyone and communication, that for Monday, that school was not going to be started yet, push it back at least a week.
I was kind of wrapping that in again with a proposed plan and timeline, if we were to discuss that, the Committee was to discuss any of the details of the plans in specific, is it okay if I go back to that?
Definitely.
So, everybody's on the same, same page, Tom Kinzer had brought up a desire to look at metrics, and to get everybody looking at multiple metrics and looking at all of our options, that was part of the purpose of this Committee, the other part was, at whatever meeting it was, when Mike rolled out the plan, when we got the plan, we also got a list of concerns from both unions that were letting, that were sort of red flags for the seven people on the Board that were supposed to vote up or down, so we got a plan, we got two lists of concerns, and then of course, concerns from teachers started coming in, from staff, and unfortunately, those are coming in through all sorts of different media, so the other half of this Committee, I was, I'm really hopeful, and I can't stress enough, I don't necessarily care about the outcome, the final details of the plan, I'd like to see and hear from especially those two unions with all those concerns, and the teachers and the parents also, I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to discuss those red flags, because again, if you can put yourselves in the Board's position, you have seven people who are being asked to vote yes on a plan by our administrator and his administrative team, with all those red flags, and they weren't comfortable doing so at the time, but I'm hopeful with some conversation and some discussions that each of those issues, or whatever those issues are, would have time to come out, be brought up, whether it's the metrics we use, A-B Day, not A-B Day, whatever it is, whatever the details are, I can't stress enough, I don't think anybody on the Board cares what that final plan says, as long as we feel like all those voices have been heard, and it's not that, it's not that we don't trust the plan that was put together, and then I don't, I haven't even heard anything in particular from anybody on the Board that there's any part of it that they feel strongly against or for, but I think it's the process more so that I'd like to see work here, and so as I look at the timeline, I'm kind of hoping that we still have another opportunity for people to reach out to Wanda, because they might not know that Wanda is one of the K4 representatives, or they might not know Mr. Geiger is the high school representative, and would be able to reach out to him, and it wouldn't necessarily be Mr. Geiger, but he's going to be in the hot seat when he does read, if he does have a list, if it even happens, if it doesn't happen, then I think all the Board can do is defer to the, to the plan that was brought to them, I think we've done our due diligence to reach out to the community, to set up this Committee, to make sure that everybody feels like they had an opportunity to be heard, whatever the metric is, and whatever the concern is, and then at the end, I think, at least, if I can speak for the Board, and as the President, I have to speak for the Board, I think we'll feel much more comfortable, and those sort of red flags and lists of concerns won't be sort of lingering on our mind, what are we voting yes for, when there are still all those concerns that are sitting out there, and Mike, I'm sorry if... And those sort of red flags and lists of concerns won't be sort of lingering on our mind. What are we voting yes for when there are still all those concerns that are sitting out there? Uh, and Mike, I'm sorry if, if, if this seems to not follow a chain of command for you, um, but again, that's something I hope to talk about tomorrow night at the, at the board meeting. What, whether we want a advisory role as a board, or an approval role as a board. And that's something that I have on the agenda for tomorrow night, for at least the, the board to think about how we're going to approach voting up or down for, for the plans that are coming forward. So I, as he talks about days to wrap in phases, I'm sort of looking at when we would need to let parents know, which I'm assuming is kind of a week ahead, which would then maybe dictate when we would have more meetings, if we're going to have more meetings.
So let's go back to the timeline for a second. So if we got, we got our data today, um, and obviously our data did not come back positive off the Boone County Health Department. If we were to use those metrics, we would need data from, what's today, 23rd? Yeah, we'd need two weeks. So November 2nd really would be the soonest we'd know if we're coming back. I can't have kids ready to come in Monday, get the data back Monday. So I probably would need to push that window back a week. The 2nd would give us the, the second reading of data. And then, uh, after that reading of data, I'd use the rest of that week to allow my schools to reach out, communicate with parents, make sure parents had plenty of time to get, um, any accommodations and arrangements set up that they needed to have. So I guess, let me modify that. We'd go the 9th, and then push everything back two weeks after that. So, um, you really get, need those two, if, if we choose to use that, those two data metrics there. Back to the concerns a little bit, and I've, I've sat in on a lot of meetings and had a lot of conversations. You do, you, you have, you have two sides, and both are right on this. You have, you have parents that are ready to see their kids back in school. They're, they're ready to send their kids back. There's guidelines, there's masks. They're comfortable with the guidelines that are in place. Um, they're ready to have, have their school, uh, kids back in school. Maybe through this plan, probably some would even like to see them back in full-time every day. We also have the other side too, and this could be, this is some parents and this is also some staff. There's still a nervousness or an anxiousness that comes with this. No matter what we do or what we say or the guidelines we put in, there's some anxiousness that still comes with the pandemic that's out there, and it's very real that everybody has to face. So, um, for me, I, I'm very comfortable having this committee and listening to, uh, those thoughts. And, um, if the cup, uh, if the committee's got some recommendations to help us move that forward, that helps me too to say this also came from a committee, so. It, it's, it's one of those things where every single plan, every single detail we looked at, it doesn't matter. There's nothing that's absolutely perfect under these times and these conditions. So, um, no matter what we ramp out, what we bring forward, there's going to be something in there that's just not, that's not school as usual. So, um, that, that's what I'll say about that, the timeline, and then just some of those concerns that we have. And I've, um, I've heard both sides quite a bit. I totally get both angles of it. Um, and at night I go home and thank my lucky stars I've got this job right now. Trying to find the, the happy medium to make everybody happy that I can't do, so. For me though, uh, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to look at a modified or any type of way that we can get, we've got kids that need in-person instruction, because it is the best instruction that they can have. And if there is a way for me to structure it and do it in a meaningful manner that minimizes risk, not only for students and staff, but if there's a structure that we can put in place to try to get some of our kids back in front of teachers, um, we just know that there are groups of kids that are just struggling right now. Um, and I think depending on which building you talk to, they can probably tell you immediately which groups are struggling. And so as an administrator, my job is now to say, hey, what am I doing and what's best for kids? And we're trying to find a good structured plan that brings kids back in a safe manner and modify, or it just limits risk, so. Well, I'd like to see, uh, if we do another meeting here, what options there as far as other metrics that we can use? And if Boone County would be able to, uh, separate their, uh, Potler Grove versus Belvedere metrics, so we can see what's a little more local for us. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts on, on the metrics here?
I 100% agree the metrics need to be looked at, because for me, I will get the metrics we're using. Our kids won't come back until after spring break if, uh, so if that's what we're going to do as a committee, then why aren't we just telling parents that and then making the gossips of what our new learning is? Because my son's kids are not getting what they need. I have straight A students who are heartbroken because they're getting C's and they're struggling. And so it's not just the son's kids that are struggling, and we have to look at all of that. What is, I mean, what's the data I knew the committee of parents that want their kids back? Are we looking at some of those just to say, okay, these parents want to come back, they feel safe? As you said, you're getting together with your family for Thanksgiving. You're getting together with your family for Christmas. How many people in this room can say that is that same thing, even though they say, no, you shouldn't go to the high house? No, you shouldn't go to the birthday party. But we are still doing it. So most people are choosing to live cautious, washing their hands, not going out when they're sick. Why aren't we doing that with our buildings, with our kids? With, I mean, I know I don't like wearing the mask, but I know I have to for work. There's things that I know I don't like, but I have to deal with, because that's what's best for my students.
I think I, I have a couple of comments on that. Um, first of all, I think me saying that I'm going to gather with my family at Thanksgiving is absolutely true. As I understand it, it's the number one transmission of the virus right now. So what we're doing outside of school is the number one transmission. And so we really can't account for the spread of the disease in those groups, right? And so I am fairly cautious, I think. Um, I am still working, so you know, that's a, a thing. But, um, my children are not going to birthday parties, and my children are not playing sports, and my children are not doing those types of things. So I am probably living a more, um, conservative role right now. And I don't know that that is true across the board. I cannot make those decisions for any other family either, so I recognize that. But I do concur that if we use the current metrics, we're not going back to school. I also think anybody who's ever taken a statistics class knows that you can make those numbers say whatever you want them to say. So it's okay with me, I guess, to look at other metrics, but I don't know that I would be doing it from the standpoint of just pushing the issue, so to speak, you know? Yeah.
So let me go back and just talk about the three sets of metrics. So you've got, um, the metrics that the Boone County Health Department that I've shared with you here is, is kind of shared with us that are school-based metrics. You've got metrics that came from the Illinois Department of Public Health that came out with the ISBE guidelines, so I could share those with the committee. The other one is a CDC chart, which has got a lot of similar keys with it too. So, um, those are the three that I know of. If anybody else knows of anything else, um, I'm open. But those are the three I've seen. There's a lot of crossover and, and lap over just about with all of them.
Jason?
Yeah, the schools that opened or the districts that opened, like, are they disregarding these metrics? Are they making the choice? You know, my son goes to school three days a week. And like, I mean, he's Winnebago. I mean, that's a hotspot, and he goes, like, you know, I just, you know, I mean, she's right. The kids really need, you know, they're struggling, and it's not just the bottom kid, it's the top kid. Um, but it's like, I don't know, it's like.
Why are there such different approaches?
Yeah, and, and like, who makes that, who makes that decision? I mean, I really, you know, which metrics are we going to follow and which ones are we not? You know, I can't believe that Dr. Jarrett would say everybody come to school if the metrics were really bad. You know, like, unless he just doesn't care and say, okay, everybody come to school. You know, like, I, I don't understand harrowing, like, harrowing.
He's harrowing.
Like, harrowing, yeah?
Yeah, everybody looks rough.
It's like, they're all the same. So does it mean that they're just throwing the metrics away? Or like, what are they doing?
Even the private schools in Boone are over.
I think, I don't know how to say this, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus or just saying it. I think some of it depends on maybe the philosophy or the, um, comfort of risk, maybe? Um, and the one thing I have noticed is that you will see the Winnebago County Schools managing quarantines and managing, uh, they, 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 they know that they're going to have COVID come in the door. Um, they know that they're going to manage quarantines. They know that they're going to have kids go home. They know that they're going to have students go home. They're going to manage quarantines. And I think what I have felt here sometimes is, is that I think we're, we're being shared with to try to stop and slow quarantines, stop disease spread as much as, as worried about it. Like Lisa alluded to, a lot of it seems to be, um, uh, these transmissions that are taking place on weekends and when people are out socializing and stuff like that. Um, but I, you know, I, I don't know. I can't speak to that. That's why this is all such foreign ground. But I, I do think that there's sometimes a difference in philosophy and approach to how, how you want to work with it.
And if I could, if I could add to that, I, Jason, I don't, nobody's ignoring it. And I, and I think, and this is not for me to say, but if we start to bring kids back, we wouldn't go backwards unless we're told we had to isolate on things. So the, the metrics that we're using currently are, well, when do you think would be a good time? Like, the, the metrics we're talking about now based off Boone County metrics are, when do you think would be a good time to go ahead and start in person? And so that's, that's what the metrics are, the world, and that, nobody's disregarding any metrics in that sense. It's just a matter of not, you know, you know, you're not going to go backwards, but you're not going to add things in with it going up. It's kind of a little bit the frame of mind. But I mean, I think that's what everybody's talking about with, do we want to look at different metrics?
Where do some of these, um, health departments or school districts, were they classified outbreak? So I've seen anywhere from, you know, they say outbreak, um, but I've seen some numbers where they're classified, it's two, two kids, two to three kids, that's an outbreak. Compared to, an outbreak to me would be a large amount of, like, is, is that just school by school or school district or health department? I mean, whose class kind of what an outbreak is within a, a school district?
So an outbreak, um, specifically related to COVID would be two or more linked cases. Um, and it, as far as like, you know, I, I don't know if you're kind of getting at like how they would close down a building or shut down one of the, the schools. Um, it all depends on the size of, you know, how many individuals were affected by those linked cases. So, um, if you have a group of students in a room that aren't able to socially distance, I mean, you could take out a whole classroom. They wouldn't necessarily shut down a whole building. It really all depends on how many people were affected.
Are schools shutting down or, I think as a less, is, is that a metric that, um, the Health Department pulls off of? Like, an outbreak, you know?
So the, the definition of the outbreak is, um, it's something that is set by, like, the CDC. But as far as like each individual situation, it's based on contact tracing, how many cases are linked. I mean, it's going to be a little bit different case by case.
Oh, I had a question or two. Who, who decides on what are the quarantine guidelines for the students and the staff as far as, you know, if they test positive, when they can return or if they're exposed? How much time do they have to stay away, or?
Um, so that depends on a few things. Um, I should probably explain the difference between isolation and quarantine, because those terms are used interchangeably a lot, and they mean something totally different. Um, so isolation is a term that's reserved for somebody who tests positive and needs to isolate in their home from other individuals. And they would isolate for 10 days from the time that they test positive or become symptomatic. A quarantine is, um, the term used for somebody who's been exposed to COVID and needs to quarantine at their home for 14 days. So it all depends on when the person becomes symptomatic, when the person is exposed. And, but, you know, that's, it kind of dictates the timeline of how long they're going to isolate or quarantine, if that makes sense.
So you could quarantine and then have to also isolate, maybe seven days you're in quarantine, and then you test positive, you'd add another 10 to that?
Correct. It would, it would change your timeline. Yes. And if you're, if you're isolated in your home, um, let's say that, you know, a spouse tests positive and they're, they're told to isolate for 10 days, um, or let me say a child. Let's say one of your children is told to isolate, and you're not able to socially distance or separate yourself from that person. They, they isolate for their 10 days. You would quarantine for an additional 14 days beyond that.
Thank you.
And then, so, some, uh, some teachers at my school, we've been talking, obviously. So if my high schooler got sent home because she was exposed, then I would assume I would also not be able to work, and my elementary student would also have to quarantine as well.
Correct.
Hold on, Julie. If, if their child was sent home because they were exposed, directly exposed, but they don't have it, I don't think it goes one more layer.
Sorry, I thought you said tested positive. Correct, yes. So a contact of a contact does not need to quarantine. So if your, if your child is at home and they are just quarantining, obviously you need to provide childcare at your, you can be home with them. But, um, that's, you're not mandated to quarantine.
But it would just be your child for the moment, and then if they test positive, now that opens you up to a direct exposure.
Sorry.
There is one thing that's not covered on the specific IDPH guidelines that were put out. Because all the IDPH guidelines specifically talk about testing positive to COVID or if somebody themselves has COVID-like symptoms. On September 9th, there was a document that was sent out to schools that said, if some, if somebody is showing COVID-like symptoms, the other people from that family also need to go home pending a test. That was sent out on September 9th by the Illinois Department of Health. Now, that's not specifically on that sheet, but it was sent out to schools by Illinois Department of Health on, uh, on September 9th.
But I don't think our health department's having a season that was something wrong.
So if there's somebody in the home that's symptomatic, and, you know, we would recommend that they all quarantine, yes, but, um, it's not mandated for their, their, sorry, no.
And the other thing that gets kind of just goofy with this, and I guess kind of conflicted with it is, is when you do have, um, a person that tests positive and you send a couple of people home because they've had direct exposure, and that person shows symptoms and then clears the symptoms. Sometimes they can get back to work sooner than your other people can, and that, that, you know, a lot of people are like, how in the world does that go on? And I don't make those rules up, but it's, that's how, that is, that is looked at or viewed at through, through your health departments to get people back into work.
And I'm an open book. So, uh, Finley was exposed, my daughter was exposed, um, back in September. And she, she was exposed on Friday. We found out on Tuesday, actually, and had to pick her up from school. We went and had her tested on Wednesday, and we received negative results. So we're, we're talking about five days after, you know, we, we went and had her tested. We received negative results. And I know even at Connecticut, they said, you still can't return even with a negative test. You still have to wait 14 days. So, you know, that, that's another thing that people are having a hard time with, even if you get a negative test, it comes back.
I think that's due to the number of false negatives, though I have a friend currently with the coronavirus who had to take four tests. And the fourth test came back positive, but the first three came back negative. And so that's something to consider. If he hadn't quarantined, he would have spread it around. And the fourth test came back positive, but the first three came back negative. And so that's something to consider if he hadn't quarantined. He would have spread it around.
How would you get that word out? You have, you know, a student that tests negative, maybe they're not going to take four more tests. They're just going to come to school. Because the parents had, they tested negative.
Usually, usually the health department's really directly involved with that. Your administrators know, your nurses know. I will say it happened in one school, but they grabbed that person, not before they exposed a few people. But yeah, usually the health department's in communication with our staff to make sure that that's done.
Yeah, and just to add to that, a negative test will not release you from quarantine. So if somebody's been told to quarantine for 14 days, it doesn't matter. They could have 10 negative tests within that timeframe. They won't be released until after that 14 days.
And then anybody else wants to go over, have any questions about or?
For my own information, it's kind of a change of subject, but I'm just, I'm not personally aware of the situation with the teaching representatives here. They're, they're here at the matter of union representation, just to make sure that if someone is being, someone is here to speak for that group. Just wondering, I don't really understand what the, what the teachers' opinions are. Is there a, is there information that everybody else knows about that? That I just have to, I don't know where our teachers stand.
We did, we just asked representation from each building. If there were, from definitely grade levels is what we're looking for. So that every, hopefully every building or every grade level would be represented in some shape or, shape or fashion. So I guess from there, you guys probably see the wide range of thoughts too. We're just looking for a cross, cross section or representation from each levels.
Did I borrow it?
Oh, sorry.
No, you buy it, please.
I was going to ask another question, but it sounds like you were asking.
I was just going to piggyback on it. Again, like I said, this is a board committee. The board created it in hopes of getting, rooting deeper into these metrics ideas. That's, I would say about half of the, half of the crux of the committee's function. But the other half, and I can say on, in my own personal opinion, I, I got on the board because I, I was a parent at a time where I felt like the staff and the teachers weren't being listened to and there wasn't enough input from them. I'm a different time, different administrator, but I'm still, I'm still very interested in knowing when I'm making a decision that there aren't stakeholders that have been left out of the process. And I'm not accusing anybody of leaving anybody out of the, out of the process. But I will state, we did get about the same time as a board member, the plan, we got lists of, of concerns from the two unions. And a slew of casual conversations, phone calls, emails, all kinds of other things. And that, if you can imagine being a board member, that gives us a moment of great pause. And so again, I can't stress enough, the board didn't create this committee to change the plan at all. If the plan doesn't change at all, I think we'll be fine. The board put this together to make sure that all stakeholders had an opportunity to have their voice heard. And it's amazing when you have different constituents, how somebody who is usually in the shadows raises their hands and says, well, what about? And gives everybody a moment of pause. Oh, we didn't think about garbage can liners or something, or we didn't think about PPE and we're all learning what PPE is and, and thermometers and, and consumables and all kinds of other things. So that I would say is the crux of this committee and the reason that we asked for representation. I wish we had the opportunity for a lot more audience members because I think there would be more opportunity. I'm sorry that putting together a committee took a lot longer than I thought it would. So that's why at the very last minute today, people were notified we're having this meeting. Reach out to your representatives, whether it's Wanda, some of the other teacher reps aren't even here. But they, they definitely have their own, their own insight. We're hearing from a lot of the parents who strongly want to go, come back. We're also getting a lot of emails from all kinds of other people with all kinds of different views that unfortunately we don't get to share with some of those parents. So we're trying to factor in everything. So the board created this committee just to hear more, just to get more input. And if it may change greatly, it may not change at all, but I think we'll feel much better about the process, that all the voices were heard in the end.
How much, is there any data or any information on what, what the teacher positions are that this committee needs to understand? Is there information that we need to review as a committee or is that just secondary to this committee? It's, it's, and Jason said maybe, but it doesn't really impact what the committee is setting up.
I, I would hope, and I have strongly urged any of the teachers and anybody who's listening, I strongly urged them to reach out to their principals. But to also utilize this committee. Can you ask your question again? I'm sorry.
I feel like I don't know anything about the teacher position whatsoever. I just wonder if there's something I need to know in order to, to serve this committee better about that.
I have hoped more would come out tonight, but I think, again, because the 11th hour, they didn't get much of a chance to reach out to the Wandas. Kate through four didn't get to reach out to Wanda. And I'm sorry, I don't know Mr. Geiger. I know him. I'm not sure the high school teachers know, okay, we should reach out to Mr. Geiger because he's going to be the one that's attending the meetings. It's not necessarily his opinion, but he has been asked to bring forth these concerns to be discussed. And in my mind, Mike and his admin team would say, yes, that was already discussed and here are the reasons we decided not to do that. Or, and I don't expect this to happen, but perhaps, well, we, we hadn't thought about that, but that is something we could consider and, and maybe would consider. So we're just interested in watching, as Tom Kinzer would say, we're interested a little bit more in watching the sausage be made. Because ultimately, we're going to have to give the final thumbs up or thumbs down to Mike's plan. This committee won't create a plan, I don't think. This committee will allow for more discussion that might lead to a different plan that Mike presents. But in the end, he and his admin team will present it to the board. It might be the same exact plan. It might vary greatly. And again, I'll feel much more content knowing, all right, don't send us now any lists of your top concerns because you had an opportunity and we had a venue for those to be discussed. And if you chose not to bring them forward, then, then that's on that committee or that, that group or that constituency. So as of now, you don't have much, I don't think. But I'm thinking when you set up the, the plan for the next meeting, perhaps there will be more that comes up. I don't know.
Mr. Bennett? Yes. I will let you know. So originally, when we talked about first coming back before school started, we, we had talked about bringing forth a synchronous, in-person and remote plan happening at the same time. I, I will tell you, I, I've had a number of staff members who have reached out to me, you know, since the beginning of the year, who have mentioned, you know, they don't think they could do synchronous, the synchronous learning plan was originally in place. I, I've since then, based off of what they've said, proposed four different plans from, you know, from what I've seen schools implementing in the area. And, and took that to them. And out of that one plan really came to the top on things. And, and then there were two variations of that plan. And then I turned around and put two plans out. And with each one, there are three, three opportunities for feedback on, with, with the number of different plans. And then we offered one opportunity for feedback or to go through union reps for the second, when, when we put out the two versions. And, and there was 22, I, I got the results out, 22 to 7 vote that we took through Google forums. So, you know, in, in that sense, you know, did, did we get feedback? Yes, we, you know, we received feedback. The biggest concern I can tell you that came through from the staff at, at the high school was, you know, it, it's just, they don't think they could do the synchronous, both in-person and remote at the same time. It would be something they, they feel like they would really struggle with to provide, you know, any kind of education. So, and that, that was my biggest thing coming forward now, you know, moving, moving forward with any kind of plan in the future is, is that's something I would like to try to work, you know, with, with the group. And I, I have kind of what I, like I said, the stuff from, from the, from the teachers on those plans. But that's my big thing is trying to make sure, you know, we try to come up with something other than a synchronous plan just because that, you know, they just don't feel comfortable with. And I've looked into, there's several other schools in the area that have done synchronous. I will tell you, Maringo, most of the stakeholders in Maringo actually like it. But I can tell you, Stillen Valley, Rock Falls, and there's one other district that was doing it. And, and they've had people who have been struggling with it, you know, veteran teachers who are pretty tech savvy and that, that the, the person, one of the people said, you know, that was what their biggest thing was to me, it was, I consider a pretty tech savvy teacher, you know. And they, and they said, I, I just don't think I can do it, Jay. And I said, I appreciate you letting me know that. That's helped me to come up with something different. So there, there's what feedback, I, you know, the major feedback can give you the team board from the teachers at the high school. I don't know, Jason, did, did you hear the same thing or?
Yeah, pretty much. You know, if there's a nervousness, there's a, I know that little teachers are scared about first person. So I have a few students showing. I mean, it's a candy device and then, you know, being able to do it and show other people and, you know.
Also a question on the metrics themselves, and we were talking about a few different types of metrics, and I'm curious if, while others, it's not necessarily a question that I can answer right now, but is there a way to put together a little snapshot of each ones that have seen that or? I, I had thought about prior to this, trying to dig up some of that information of my own, sort of do my own research. And I thought, well, probably a little point in that because there's so much varying information out there. Why come here and assume that everybody's going to agree with what I'm looking at? But maybe it's hard to put something together to, to share a little packet or something with, with this group to, to review that. Just, you know, I'm really trying to understand what the value is of looking at three different sets of, sets of metrics side by side. And if you use the goal to, to pick the one that suits the narrative that we prefer or? That's, it's kind of something that I'm not really clear on because it, what is, sort of cherry pick a set that, that works best for this group? I don't know that that really serves. I'm not really sure what that purpose is, so I just wonder if that really has any, is there, is there a way to, to put together a snapshot that shows this group the, the different metrics side by side and how they could be impacted or how they could impact what we're trying to accomplish here?
Yeah, I can give that, I can send that out to the committee. I can give you, you know, the Illinois Department of Health, what they put in our ISB guidelines that we got back in June. I can give you what the, that kind of health department kind of rolled together and tried to do something a little more school specific. And I, I believe I've got the chart for the CDC. I could put that all together so that you could kind of look to see who uses what factors and what. But you're kind of hitting at some of the, the, the rough pieces I have here too. This is like, if you fade away from this, I don't know that I feel equipped to be able to say in a, in a pandemic that this, I am a doctor, but not that kind. But there's no way I'll know what to, to be comfortable with. And then in the meantime, man, it's so important that I work collaboratively with our health department because I really, they, they need, I need them to have my back on a lot of stuff as, as they go through this and work with CDC and the Illinois Department of Health, so public health. But I have no problem putting those three together for you and sending it out to the committee. I guess if, there's no other questions or comments here. Does anybody have any issues or see any issues with phase two as, as far as the plan goes? The only things I've been hearing is comments on the metrics that we're going to be using. But as far as the plan goes, does everybody feel pretty good about that or?
I'm not sure we got the opportunity to get.
That's why I was asking, see if anybody had any more comments.
I'm not sure you'll get excited, but maybe, but I think maybe we'll look at our next meeting and hope that there will be some listed comment that are sent to Mike in advance to give him and his teams the opportunity to progress. Which is why I was interested in discussing when we meet next and how that would fit in the Mike's timeline for when he plans to fix things.
Because of all these specifics we have are dates right now, not how it's, what it's going to look like.
Yeah, it was.
There's a basic. Right. But I mean, we, we have dates and who's coming back, not what a band of classrooms.
Yeah, that schedule was, that's probably that schedule. That's what we went through.
And it's the same one that was shared at the labor management meetings. None of that has changed.
But, but like eight to 10:30 and the kids are going to be six feet apart and we have hand sanitizing stations outside the door and?
Students will not be, we will not be able to have students be six feet apart. We don't have space for that. Our goal would be three feet, but we don't know if we can meet that in every classroom. Some of that will depend on the number of students who are coming back. And then, I mean, the hand sanitizer and some of that, I know that, yes, we have hand sanitizer across the buildings. And there's the cleaning protocols that are already in place and, you know, every room will be disinfected every night or the morning before students come in. I mean, so all of that is, is the same guidelines. None of that has changed.
Okay. And like, what about staff in classrooms? We had two teachers out at the same time. We have a hard time getting subs to begin with, even when we're not in the pandemic. What's that going to look like if we don't have adults to manage the kids?
So every school has had the ability to hire a sub. Now, so now it depends on what kind of quarantine is coming. Did we have to send a staff member home to quarantine and they feel fine? We may have to work and have that staff member teach remotely back to kids. Did the whole class go home? We might have that whole class then go be online learning for that period of time. Really with that staffing, like you said, it's going to be tough to, to come up with subs in the middle of the year. We're going to have to be pretty fluid and flexible with how can we get, how can we get a certified teacher to teach it? It might be having to be done remote. We might have to use some teachers assistants to come in and help with supervision while the teacher's up on this, on the, the smart board or something like that. So there is a lot of what ifs and how do you do that? And then this now comes back to, how do you manage these quarantines when they pop up? And a lot of that will be just based on independence. All right, let me go back to it. I know Carrie alluded to the six feet apart. So when Illinois put the guidelines out, about six feet apart or as much as possible. And in the summer, we were working really, really hard to try to get to six feet, if we could, between desks. Well, when we got down to that, I think you're down to an average of like 10 to 12, some classrooms, maybe at the most 13 and 14. So since that, I've had a lot of conversations with superintendents in the Winnebago area. We've had re, we've reopened this back up with the health department. And we said, you know, talk to me a little more about the six foot. And when we talked to the health department within the last few weeks here, they said, the six foot apart for students is really like the gold standard. If you can be there, that is the gold standard we love to see. We realize that that's probably not really possible. So what we're saying is, is if you can get kids two to three feet apart, we understand that that's probably more likely. Make sure kids are wearing masks. If the kids are wearing masks, that is what we felt was the most important piece. So a little bit of a difference of perspective, maybe compared to where we were this summer on that.
And I'll ask, just because it's come up for several staff members that are at my building. A lot of us are questioning the difference between K-4 only going four days a week until 10:30 and 5 through 12 doing an E-B-SL schedule. We, there's been a lot of questions about why we wouldn't just have everybody on an E-B-SL schedule.
So I can speak to that from the K-4 lens. And then if Nicole needs to jump in, she can too. But one of the reasons that we are looking at the half days for K-4 is because of the unstructured time of recess and lunch and not having enough space in the building to keep those kids from being all over each other because they're young. Also, we are also looking at it from a, and I'm looking at the numbers. young. Um, also, we are also looking at it from a, and I'm looking at the numbers here, the number of students who, based on our surveys, want to remain full remote. And because it's one classroom teacher, you know, um, we're not content specific, if, if we would go back for full day, then what we would need per grade level is a minimum of two full-time remote learning teachers at K four per grade level, um, which would mean that, and we could explore this option, that might be something the committee wants to explore. But what that would mean is our K four students, any of our K four students across the district would not be guaranteed their current teacher that they have so far. They would not be guaranteed their home school, because we might have to put kids at different schools based on the number of kids who select to come back. Or we might have to move teachers from one school to another based on the number of kids who choose to come back at different schools. Um, so, and I'm just looking at like first grade right now. Based on our numbers, we have twenty-eight students who want to remain remote in first grade. So, we would need two remote learning teachers, because what our class size is...
Twenty-seven.
It splits at twenty-seven, so we would need two first grade teachers. Um, and so, that would mean two of our teachers that we have right now would have to become full remote. So, all of their students that would want to remain in person would have to be switched to another teacher. That teacher may not be in their home building. Um, and then, of course, any students who want to remain remote will switch from their current teacher to the remote learning teacher. So, it's a lot of shuffling of schedules and changing of teachers for our youngest students.
And I think we try to value keeping our younger kids with their home...
With their home, with the teacher that they've met since the beginning of the year.
In this plan.
So, that was our original, that was one of the reasons why, um, we kept it in that way. So, students can learn in person in the morning from their classroom teacher, and then in the afternoon, if they are in person in the morning, then in the afternoon they would do P E, music, art, library, all of that virtually. And the classroom teachers would then teach their remote students virtually in the afternoon, reading, math, and science, and social studies, and all of those things. Focus on reading and math, but we need in science and social studies when they come. Um, and based on our numbers right now, every teacher would have at least one remote learning student. Some would have up to seven or eight. Um, it just depends on whose classroom they're in. Based on the numbers that we have.
Carrie and Helen, that's more exploring. Like Amanda said, that's the biggest concern I hear across the board, is that our youngest students who cannot be home alone are only half-days, and our older kids who can be home alone are in school more. And that puts parents in a situation where now they have to pay for daycare or not work, and that's putting our entire community in a questionable spot. So, I mean, I, I know, I know that too, but...
I, I agree. No, I agree. It's, it's, it's hard, and none of these have been easy things to try to figure out. Um, and I think that is something we can explore. We would have to really sit down and look at the numbers. We would have to get commitments from parents.
Um, when was the last survey sent out?
August.
So, maybe by now people are like, go back to school, please.
Uh, yeah. I mean, I know I want mine out of that. Um, and I'm not even home with them, but I just want them. So, um, but, you know, it's, it's, I think, yeah, we could send that out. And we actually are surveying kindergarten parents right now, since that has been approved. Um, but then, but it is approved on the half-days. So, the data we're getting, the parents that are selecting, yes, they're coming back in person, or no, they're not, is with that knowledge that it's half-days, you know? And so, we are gathering that information right now. Um, but we don't have, it, we have some parents, and I know Nicole, you know, has had this in her building, that they're just, they're not sure. They're not ready to give a definitive answer, um, for many reasons. And so, we're still waiting on some of that data. Um, but we are still looking at, like, based on our data right now, Manchester's looking at nine students in kindergarten who want to remain remote. P G E is looking at fifteen. K burn is looking at three, but you have a lot of that have not gotten back to you yet. Six undecided at K burn. And I just, with all of this, if we're going to look at that, I'm happy to do work on those numbers and look what they look like, but I think, I just want to stress that I don't think we can sit and take too much time with all of this. I understand that it needs to be thoughtful, but I also understand that it's October, and we haven't had students in school yet. And so, I think we need to really work on a plan to get kids back in front of their teachers as soon as possible, when we, you know, with a plan that will get them in front of their teachers. Because I think we have, I'll agree with some of the teachers that have said tonight, we have many students who are struggling.
And I, I did, I mean, I did ask for a personal reason, too. My son goes to Manchester, and it worries me that he's gonna be, I know, his classroom is small. He's in the same room he was last year. It's a small room, and potentially, he might, I mean, last year there were twenty-five to twenty-seven kids in that room. That's a lot of kids for a small room, even if it's only for two and a half hours a day. As a parent and as a teacher, an A B split makes me feel a lot more comfortable. That's half the kids that I'm in contact with, half the kids that my, both my kids are in contact with. And, you know, like, just, that's me being honest. As a parent, A B makes me feel better. As a teacher, A B makes me feel better.
So, as an elementary parent, and other elementary parents in the room, if we were considering an A B split, so your, your student would not be in school every day. They were in school every other day for a full day. I think it'd be nice to hear from parents on, on how that would impact them.
So, I have a parent who have a first grader. Having her in school all day is easier for daycare purposes. Um, finding someone to pick her up in the middle of the day is tough. Um, I don't know what the bus situation is gonna look like, and I'm wondering if that's why some parents are undecided. I know in August when that was sent out, I didn't answer it, because I don't know what's available. Can she take the bus? Can she not? Can she take the bus to my school? Like, there's so many unknowns. I couldn't make a decision. And I didn't feel comfortable reporting a decision that I didn't really, couldn't stand the time. Um, and so, the full day, from a daycare parent perspective, is easier, and the less contact is easier to, to take in and digest than the big classes.
I would agree with, uh, what Paul said. It says, at least for a parent of elementary school, um, I guess my other concern is, I, and I know there's a lot of teachers here, and I'm not a teacher, obviously, so first off, thank you. Um, but do the teachers feel they can give an adequate amount of instruction to the kids in a two and a half hour window compared to full day A B schedule? Um, and I guess, some of the concerns, I guess, I would have, by the time you shuffle the kids in, um, they get their temperatures checked, I guess, I don't know how that would look. Um, you get the kids out of there, um, you know, are we only realistically looking at, well, then pack them up for the day? So, are we only realistically looking at, you know, two hours, an hour forty-five minutes of actual instructional learning, you know? Do the teachers, I guess, feel that, you know, that's something that's very realistic, that we're giving the kids the most quality instruction we can? I'd like to maybe hear from some of the teachers, or what their thoughts and opinions on that.
I, I had thought about that. We're gonna lose fifteen minutes on the front and fifteen on the back of direct instruction time. Um, the way I understand it, we're focusing on reading and math. Those are our two things. I have multi-age, so I, I might not have a lot of kids, but the math has to be taught, first grade math, second grade math. Reading, I can blend the kids together, but right now I have seven reading groups, and I'm trying to get through that in my, you know, hour and a half, two and, well, actually, it's an hour and forty-five minutes in the morning right now. So, I feel like we're gonna lose a little bit of instruction time, um, even if it's just reading and math that we're teaching. So, even if we, you know, we added another half an hour to that morning, just so we don't lose that fifteen on the front and on the back, so we wouldn't have time to actually teach instead of manage. I, that's what I'm worried about. We're just managing kids, and, okay, it's time to go home, and I probably didn't teach a thing today, you know?
Hi, Nancy, I'm Nancy. So, coming from, uh, you know, if you were telling me that we're gonna delay it to like, let's take November as kindergarten, so we're gonna go back on an A B schedule, um, I would feel like, and not the half-days, I'd be appreciative of the delay to get them back in longer. That means that I, that, because you guys have more time to work out what switches. I feel like you get a lot more, um, I don't say excitement, that's the wrong word, but you get more like appreciation of this. Uh, we're gonna figure this out, bring them back longer, so it's gonna take a little bit longer figuring out. You would get a happier result, being reached out. That was from my opinion. I feel there's a lot of parents who've thought we could do it all, if you'd say.
This makes me think of some of the conversations I've heard, that although dedicating some of our teachers to being only e-learning would take away from classroom teachers, I think there are some teachers out there that don't really want, that would choose, I'll be that e-learner. I don't really want to go back for whatever reason. Uh, I'm just throwing that out there again, because that's something that I have heard a number of times, and this is exactly what we're kind of hoping will happen, that you'll have a chance to hear. Well, I hadn't even thought about that one. I'm not a teacher, I'm not, uh, not, not aware of the opinions of those other people. So, this is, I think, what we're seeing happening here is what we're hoping would be going on.
I think, um, one thing to remember, too, if we do the A B schedule, it's not, yes, I, I fully agree, having kids in front of their teacher the whole day is better. Um, but it's not really more instructional time, because you're gonna be, they're gonna be in a whole day, and then they're gonna be home a whole day. And when they're home a whole day, they're not getting instruction. They might be doing activities, but they're not gonna be getting instruction, because their classroom teacher is going to be teaching the kids that are in front of them. So, I think we have to remember that when we're talking about the A B days. So, it is, I mean, it's just a different way to look at it. So, when you're looking at that, it, it does look a little bit different. Um, and then I think if we're gonna consider that, then this, it would, it would have to be a recommendation out of this committee. Um, and then also that, you know, that we're okay with students changing their teachers. I mean, a lot of students will have their teachers changed.
Paul, so you're drawing in E, music, and lunch, all in person?
All in person. So, there'll be a lot more transitions, um, throughout the day and all of that, which we can do. We're gonna be doing that at the upper grades, too, and it's easier to do if there's less kids in the building, uh, which is why the upper grades are looking at that A B schedule as well. Um, so, you know, we can do that. It's just a lot of them, they're having those transitions where they're moving throughout the building. Um, so that's a different way to look at it.
We know if, if, oh, we're here, because we're obviously in the same county, if they come out with a proposal today that they're looking at K four, K through four, I think it is, or K through five, however they do it, so we go back Monday through Friday, is that... Did anybody do that? I wasn't...
I hope so. Their plan is Monday through Friday, um, K five. Um, and they are gonna, they, in their plan, it's clear that students will have to change teachers. Um, they've made that pretty clear in order to, to do this, yeah.
And, are, is that a survey that we could send out or look into? I mean, I would assume most parents, I believe out there was pretty similar to Northwood in their parent survey, and seventy percent of parents, roughly, give or take, right, seventy percent wanted their kids in school. I mean, is that a sacrifice that, you know, our parents willing to take, um, or willing to give, if they would not have the same teacher, if their kids would be in school full-time, like?
I think out there's sent out a survey. I saw a survey asking... Survey asking if you were going to be remote or in person for the details of the plan. We're not, we're not part of the survey.
Okay. And, and I guess, um, because it sounds like maybe there's concern with administration that, uh, you'd have to, you guys think it's important, or like, that the kids are staying with the same teacher? Um, I don't know if that's important to parents. I, I don't know.
Something very easily we could do. I think in this concept and in that model, we try to value them staying with their home school teacher, or for their home classroom, and in their own schools just for continuity and structure. But those can all be just...
And we know, I mean, is, is out there, then went back to the metrics, are they going off and move county health department, or are they just deciding, or we're gonna assume some, some viability, or not viability, I should say, as well, or some risk, assume some risk, um, against these metrics, or try to go back to school?
Um, I've had several conversations with Dan, and Dan was using those metrics, um, and I think they proposed what, November fifth for them? So, and I didn't get a chance to call him today after he ramped up his plan. So, I'd be interested to hear is, what happens if those metrics don't hit, what we...
Like, maybe for the sake of the parents that, that do strongly want to go back, and perhaps, uh, want to go back to our original plan, where they're just in school all day, some have chosen to be remote. Can you address why we would or would not consider that as, I'm sure Ms. Wendleborn and, and some of the parents that were interested in reaching out to us have strongly wanted us to just, why don't we go back to our original plan, where you can elect to be remote, uh, and if you don't, then you're going back to school? Can you speak to that at all?
We still have that plan detailed out. We chose to go this route, um, really because we felt this one was just a little more structured, uh, with smaller groups coming back, and then we just, that was what we went for. But you could go back straight to having everybody in with all the guidelines and the state board. And the approach was to phase kids in, in smaller groups with support and, like, this, and give kids a chance to go back.
Yeah, and I absolutely understand the logic. I just thought that was something also that has been out there, perhaps, worth discussing, so I appreciate it.
I know in our building, we have a teacher who, just elementary age children, if we are back in person, she questions, and she has to teach from home, because now her kids are on A B half-days, and she's teaching all day. So, what does she do?
Yeah, and depending on the plan we bring back, scheduling and staffing become the hurdles that you're, you're up against. And I think when we've talked about it from the administrative standpoint, is, no matter what plan we pick, we're gonna be against that, no matter what. So, then what we have to do is bring something back that we feel is what's best for our kids in the district. No matter what we pick, staffing and scheduling we'll be up against. And you just hope that you can work with your staff in a way to get our people back, because it's a whole thing. And the schedules, too.
Any other questions or comments here, or? I think we'd be looking at, looking at different options, at what our metrics are gonna be here, and different K four options, or what I've been hearing, issues are, and, uh, have to discuss phase three at our next meeting. Is everybody up for another meeting? Probably I'd like to do it quicker.
I don't think we're planning on phase three, right? I mean, we're not, I, I don't know if we need to discuss phase. I, I would rather, if we could, maybe next time, discuss them as a whole, because the phases are really meant to be looked at as a whole, not pieced in, because they build on one another. And so, if we're gonna talk about, if we could next time, if we wanna look at some of these different options, but then look at all the phases, because maybe there's some things we wanna move around. I don't...
And the thing we did figure out was when we worked with each of those phases, if you move one, it has a ripple effect against the few others.
So, I guess we'll, uh, look at the whole plan in our next meeting.
And this, the meetings that we have, and the conversations that we have as of now, aren't slowing us down any as far as implementing any of them, correct? It is still COVID itself that is keeping us from implementing, not necessarily any discussions we have.
Yes, I would, and the metrics that we're gonna use, if we're gonna...
Yes, it would depend on the metrics that we're gonna use. We're gonna go strictly by the Health Department's guideline.
Well, as of now, we're just working with the CDC's guidelines, yes? Or the Health Department's, I'll tell you, the Health Department's.
Hope you don't have any other comments. Guess we'll try to have another meeting.
Hopefully we'll get it for next week. I'd like to get this going sooner so we can get kids back to school here. Um, anybody doesn't have anything else to, nobody has anything else to add? I guess we'll adjourn and.
Have you set the date now?
I'm okay. I'm going, I'm good with Monday. Is everybody good with Monday at, uh, 6?
Twenty-six.
Is that the 26th? Monday, 26, at 6:5? All right, let's do it. Well, thank you guys for coming out and.